Order, please. Lindsey's got the attendance. I think Councilor Berry will be here in a couple of minutes. And can we have a motion to excuse the mayor, please?
Some.
Moved and seconded by Wade, seconded by Councilor Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Thank you. Abs with regrets. Any conflicts of interest? We can do that at the time. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Couple in camera.
Two in camera items, okay. We'll do that in camera. We have two items. Jim, go ahead, sir. Go. I messed it up. Yell it to us.
Doctor's Home on Vancouver Street.
Okay, we'll do that under ADFG 8H. We'll do that. Put that under Vancouver Street. Anything else? I think, Donnie, you had a concern, maybe, I think you talked to the people about the Chauvok Point or Town Point Cemetery, that they could apply to the grants program?
That's Steve.
Oh, Steve, okay. The other, yeah.
Taken care of.
That's taken care of? Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, good. Have a motion to accept the agenda with the additions, please. Moved by Dawn, seconded by Jim. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Splash Park presentation. Linda? Come on up. I think you've already made a presentation to the municipality, I understand. And have you done Argyle?
No, that is, uh, in three.
Okay, good. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you very much for having me.
Just move the microphone over, Linda, please.
Sure. Lots of asks and, uh, and I, Dad, was one of my favorite people. I know that there's hearing lots made, so I appreciate that time you give me to listen and appreciate whatever decision is made. Uh, if you've ever gone by any of the Splash Parks in our province, uh, you'll hear lots of noise. It's all positive. I'm just screaming that just a lot of kids and someone like Phil when we were on the road, you're like, uh, you'll see kids interacting in ways that they traditionally don't do just because it is one of the most accessible, attractive, engaging facilities that are out there at this time. A Splash Park could meet the needs of the youth and our families. One, it provides lots of physical activity, but also addresses some of the social and emotional issues. And as a retired teacher, those are very important to me. It also would address some of the issues around poverty and mental health that seem to be, uh, quite common in the community lately regarding our area. One, it would provide free outing for children and family and seniors. Uh, it would also address some of the mental health issues and probably one of the biggest issues. Uh, one of the, yes, recommendations for struggling with mental health or his struggle with mental health is construction, um, at the time, and that is exactly what ADFG will provide. Along with all of the benefits to the community, I think it also enhances our community. If you're looking to, uh, attract people to your, this is something that would be certainly beneficial. So that's kind of the rationale behind our committee and why we see it as a valuable piece in infrastructure for, uh, community. Uh, as a, just to look back, we're not particularly formed a few years ago, but there were lots of issues regarding it just because I, I misunderstood how big a project this was going to be. It wasn't going to be a, because that was Splash Park, it will be built tomorrow. And so it has taken a little bit longer. So we looked at, we looked at numerous investment sites, including Southern, Eden Park, the Mariners Center, Army, this whole central school. And those are the big pieces of property that we looked at. Set down an area in the middle of Houston that has experience in this area. And she gave some criteria for looking at site selection. Availability, changing rooms in Washington, and all those. And most sites, some of those sites may have something. And went further into it, we realized Beacon Park, it is a church. That's not, uh, public property. Uh, or plenty of schools and central schools are, yes, buildings that have facilities within them, but not accessible to outside playground or play park. And the Mariners that probably do have, uh, changing rooms, the idea of kids coming and going inside from a building like that is probably not. So we looked at, regardless of whatever site, we ended up getting, we thought we'd build something that would, uh, for changing rooms. We looked at parking, we looked at shade and sun, we looked at accessibility. We looked at transportation, from all, uh, community numbers to access, water availability. Who are the owners of the land? Um, what was the opportunity for the management that were the case? Connection to other facilities, uh, and security and lighting as well. And in the end, we felt that the Mariners Center was the best location. It would enhance the present facility and it's already a, a well-established center for the community, um, property. So with all of that in mind, we just looked a little bit at some of the expansion plans, the proposed expansion plans for the Mariners Center. And we thought, so that we wouldn't have our interest here, we looked at by the Milwaukee facility, just there on Long Tony Shelly, but we're certainly, we would be open to whatever. But we just didn't want to be get excited about having the opportunity to build something there and then with expansion, actually make some changes. So with all of that, in my development program myself, went on towards Splash Parks. And there are Splash Parks in Middleton, where we have a little of the minus as well as shelter. And they were all designed and built by the same company. And so, uh, we put a lot about the facilities and who operated them and how we was going on. And so in the end, we came up with, uh, high things we were working for, providing first of all, we would be looking as one of the owners of the Mariners Center, we would be looking to build on that site. We would need 206 square meters. And, uh, we include the pad itself and area just outside that for tables and other things, as well as the change house and, uh, operational equipment. We would need your financial support. Um, spoke to Zach, Senator Dean, and Chris, Dr. Malone. But we will need financial support from the three leaders we've been saying. That's probably one of the most attractive, that is also one of the attractive, uh, reasons for the site. We're all very proud of the owners of that. We would need support to be in the enhancement.
Yeah, and I think, Linda, I had a talk with Jerry. That'd be the asset donation program. You said you could do donations through, right? So I've had that conversation with Jerry.
Uh, and so for two bricks and five bricks, just for example, there were, there was an opportunity for us to receive a break for a significant amount of money. And, but one of the things they already asked for was the site and the owners were in a property compete. And that was through Recreation in Sosa. And, uh, that was, there was a significant amount of money there, but the fact that we're still holding and willing to take over the operations and most of the construction. Very much like the Mariners Center itself, having been on its state yard. The same type of process we would like with this, um, Splash Park. We worked in our course, uh, we met the Recreation, because they weren't primary managers, and the Splash Parks. And so, and help.
And Linda, the total cost, maybe without the, without the, uh, change rooms, the cost of the park itself, the pad itself?
Equipment and installation, they were, I did your package with, uh, this is the most current, uh, from ABC Recreation. And it was a hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred feet of all the requirements. And that did include the installation. What it doesn't include is getting water to the park itself, whether the pad itself and building. So that's a whole, uh, a costly thing to do.
Yeah. Okay, Councilor Hood?
Go ahead, Cliff. So, the quote was December 4th and expires in thirty days. Is still, do you still have a valid quote there?
That is, and we're, well, that is the, that was, I received that one genuinely, right? The, that would have changed.
So that's the first question. The next question is for the solicitor. When we cost share on something like this, this is, so this is sole source. You haven't looked at another supplier to do this?
Actually, those are the only ones that, um, seem to be available.
Are you sure of that?
That was, uh, everyone that we talked to.
Like, who, who did you talk to?
People that went up through Lee Valley. They were those people that they could find. And they were also builders and show.
So the question for the solicitor is this. If we, uh, if we cost share in a program like this and become part of the owners, are we not required to go by town tendering practices?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, you still have to comply with the town, uh, tendering requirements, even for the Mariners Center, which I think, uh, does in, in most cases. So, I, I mean, I think you might look at it, I guess, as the kind of ballpark figure. But if you're gonna go to actual construction, you'd have to go through the tendering, tendering process.
So as presented, this isn't ready to go in far as a recommendation? That, as being one that followed tendering practices of the municipal government act?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think, because the town didn't, didn't go through the procedure. It's some other party obtained it.
So we'll have to put our minds to that, folks, before we jump ahead too far.
I think that, I think, Council, I think the thing that Linda's looking for is they need, uh, a site, a site that they're comfortable with. And Steve sat in on the committee some meetings. And Frank was there and I was there, and they had a really good group there. But they are looking, they're kind of chasing their tail a little bit now with, um, have, went to the Mariners Center Board. Well, have you talked to the municipalities? And the municipalities said, have you talked to the Mariners Center Board? And say, so what Linda's doing right now is knocking them off one by one to approve the site. And then what you talked about, I think, would fall into place. We would follow the, the normal tendering process. And that group wouldn't have any problem with that. No.
So I don't want them to get that all done, and then all of a sudden it starts because we have to do, at some point, you're gonna have to go through the tendering.
Yes.
Absolutely. At this point, we can't, like, we can't do anything without, it's like, a first, like, we can't approach.
And, and usually, Linda, uh, in this process here, we don't, uh, make any decisions today. But Lindsey will have it on the next council meeting for a decision on the site of the Mariners Center for the Splash Park Committee. Right, Lins?
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions for it? Go ahead, Jim.
Linda, I was just wondering, what is the expectation of your group that met with Frank and Phil and yourself? As for the process, that you, if it's approved, if we support the Splash, the Splash Park idea, what's the process to get to its final, uh, presentation?
Well, once we had the site confirmed, then, and the three municipalities agreement, because that typically indicated to me that until that was confirmed, that was really difficult to look at. But many options that were available to the provincial.
And, and federal funding? Yeah. And as was mentioned earlier by Phil, one could make a donation through the asset program of our town of Yarmouth.
So if we, uh, how bad on letting it go in that direction yet, just in that we don't have a site yet, for some people, that would be an important piece of information that they would like to know.
So you've been working on this for a little while now. What is your expectation for opening day? Based on a process that we, we don't know for sure.
Would like to buy this stuff?
And the other thing I, I neglected to say.
That's all my job.
This is, yeah, she's doing, I think, myself and Steve and Frank, we just get out of the way and let the women, they do a really good job. Like, you have a really good group around the table. And I neglected to say that Nicole Albright from Argyle is also on the committee. Councilor Albright. And maybe another person you should touch base with is, uh, the MLA in Argyle, Mr. LeBlanc Colton. Might be a good idea just to keep him in the loop in case he needs, uh, in case Zach needs some help in their little prodding or pushing. Be a good idea. Anything else? Cliff, go ahead.
Uh, Linda, so was there an indication from any of the others that they got, uh, federal money?
Yes. I mean, if one of the, if that.
One did? But not all of them?
Not all of them.
And what about provincial contributions?
Yeah.
All, all of them did?
Yeah.
Because, uh, and if we make this contention on federal and provincial funding and all that, it's so close to being a municipal project, right? It'll, if you start waiting for that one, it might take a, quite a long while. That's what I'm thinking. All right, I just.
The one thing I learned on this whole process, that, uh, when you go to Middleton and you press the button, there's a fifteen second delay. When you go to Berwick and press the button, there's a fifteen second delay. When you go to New Minus and you press a button, there's a fifteen second delay before the water comes on. In Kentville, I found out there's no such delay. I pressed the button. I had Frank had to blow the hot air on me all the way down. I was soaked, hit the toe. Okay, Linda, we're good, so. Thank you very much. Very good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Uh, staff reports, CAO. Jeff, have you got anything you want to highlight or anything you want to bring up, please? Or any questions?
Just any questions, hold.
Anything for Jeff? Yeah, I got maybe one that hasn't, uh, for the facilitation on the fourth. Is there anything extra that you have to do and staff to, to go into there? Or anything that Alistair's asked for?
Yeah, the only thing, uh, so far is that on Friday afternoon, myself and the other two CAOs will meet with Alistair. Uh, we haven't yet. We've just received that invitation to, to meet and discuss the agenda for the fourth. And, uh, I assume we'll talk about some of the details, um, around, around the evening. But it's, uh, six to nine on the fourth is what we're looking at. And, um, you know, hopefully, hopefully we get everybody's full participation. So I'll keep you advised if there's anything comes out of the meeting on Friday that, uh, that you, you should know or be aware of going into the meeting on the fourth. I will let you know.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, Fire Department. Jeff, do we have anything there? I think it is. That's the chance.
Yeah, um, nothing on the Fire Department, uh, to, to offer at this point, other than we're continuing our search for the, for, uh, new fire chief. And, uh, hope to have news for you in the near future.
Good. Thank you. Yeah. Oh, Dawn, go ahead, sir. Sorry.
Well, I had a couple of things. I had one, have we got the date for the, the deer presentation? Remember, the deer presentation?
They were supposed to be today, but they canceled, right, Lindsey?
Okay, good. That was one thing I had here. And then it said, um, it said connections from east of Stars Road to the town boundary line. Where's that? On what's, on one side for your, for your sidewalk? East? It said sidewalk connection continues east of Stars Road to the town boundary line. Where's that? I'm just trying to picture in my head.
So I think we're talking about Stars Road going, heading, um, from where we have built out to Charles Crosby Drive, ultimately go all the way out. And I think the motion there is to look into the feasibility of it, not to actually build it. Uh, so, so, um, yeah, so that, uh, to be honest, we haven't, uh, we haven't put our shoulders into that one too heavily because we know that counsel from previous discussions, the Haley Road is, is a higher priority to counsel. And so we've kind of been focused there.
It says, I read that in the completion, completed task, and that's what we're, that we're, so I'm like, okay, just.
Yeah, no, we've, we've designed another section of it, but it hasn't been identified by counsel as a priority.
Good, thank you. Um, Operational Services Report, Chad. Anything for Chad? Or Chad, do you have anything you want to highlight for us, please? Think you're off the hook, Chad. I think they're gonna save it for Mark or DiMario, I think. Don't jump up yet, Mark. Oh, yeah, you can. Planning Department, Jeff, there's. Nothing there? Planning Department?
Nope.
Nope, good. Uh, Mr. Brophy, sir. The Asset Management and Infrastructure Renewal Report, Mark. Any questions for Mark? You're off the hook. He might win that bet after all. Uh, oh, go, go ahead, Mark.
No, not for Mark.
Not for Mark? Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Go back for Chad.
Okay. Now, we're looking for Chad now.
No, I, I don't need Chad to come forward. I just wanted to make a, make a point to counsel. Uh, the, the annual ridership numbers in the tran, for the transit system, uh, was pushing twenty-five thousand. And if, if any of you were around when we last had a transit system before this, when we had Huts Transit, in their last years of operation, reaching nine thousand was about where they were. So the transit system as it's running right now is, uh, is almost three times the ridership of what, of what that system had. So, uh, from that perspective, I think it's, uh, it's been successful.
Good, thank you. Yeah. What's the story on the other bus, Chad? Is that, have you got that, that's ready to go, just in case? The old bus? It goes?
We actually, we keep the old bus in service. We operate it.
Okay, good. Good, good. You got one more? No, you're good, Chad. What about Mark? You want him to come back out? Uh, Finance Department, Jerry, is my famous buddy's Daniel McCarthy. Did you say we got any money?
No, no money.
Okay. Okay.
So I've submitted the summer statements. I've had a chance to go through those. And you can see, we're managing our own line fairly well. We're pretty close to budgeting. And that's, uh, that'd do with the help of all the pressure of managers to defer to the housing costs. And that's what they don't need to do with furniture. So even though we're, we're, have some barriers, we've been able to, uh, some, some short-term managers are, uh, there's a good advantage, good, good help. Uh, one, one thing I do feel like to pass it, as we had staff, and they finished up, they're thinking they want it for today. And it's good information, but it's, uh, something that we use on, uh, budgeting tasks, do with our assessments. So it rolls out with the new rule. So each year, we do analysis, uh, show, uh, explaining the change in our role. As long as the past has, was for information and, uh, maybe the commentary was that.
I just want that. Are you gonna do a favor, give a job for them? Is you have to, do I get a migrate, do I get a register of property? Do I have to migrate? Can you do that? It's gonna be done by the next year, but you said the last one did that. Is that true? Yeah. Yeah, just in case there's some problem. Can you do that?
So the good thing is we have a seven tab, overall assessments for the town, taxable assessments. So a lot of a little bit, um, on the residential side, just playing, if we take our two thousand nineteen taxable assessment, that's how we would have ended up here. Uh, so there are changes through over the years that would be our starting point. And we look at all the areas as we're planning to develop. So we do our best to identify, so they may not be, um, one hundred percent correct. There's certainly a non-inequity range, uh, range for new constructions. Uh, so those are additions for our assessment. Um, properties sold, so when properties sell, some are sold, uh, less than assessment, some are sold higher. But there's also the cap that's eliminated after sold. So with the cap being removed and hopped up to the next selling price, that also as well. So, uh, you'll see six hundred thousand dollars increase from half being sold. A small decrease from half being sold. So I just want to separate those two of them together. Uh, we also have a couple of problems that are torn down. And then the classification change, that's where we have supplied where residential house is, usually it's commercial. Unfortunately, residential, residential.
How much would that be, like, increased in? You go by dollar sixty-two, you're going to have dollar sixty-two every hundred. How much would that be?
The big, uh, the next one is, you had to show it, uh, the commercial side, a huge increase.
Sixteen thousand times.
Which would have been a five, eight, eight, that's a lot of.
Nine. No.
And then.
No.
Everything else, you want to address, and overall market change. So, um, that typically is just a concept of that, um, assessment go through. And they have different parts of the town, uh, like the, uh, one or two percent.
Maybe s, dollar sixty-two times.
Overall, um, we look at these numbers, you'll see a little bit of the residential side, which would be four hundred thousand. So, uh, that's a lot of cash that we're still on. On the commercial side, basically no changes.
Yeah.
But if you look at.
That'd only be. Thirty-two thousand.
Next year, we budget nine thousand. We're going to grant this year, so, uh, maybe pursue our, for a help. Last, uh, three, um, to, so budget discussion.
Hard to believe that budget discussions are already here. Are gonna be here in a, yeah, I know. But starting to go at her again. Yeah. Yeah. Anything else, Chair? Anything else for, for Jerry? Yeah, thanks, man. Thank you. Uh, Frank. Yarmouth Recreation. Anybody have anything for Frank? Uh, go ahead, Cliff.
In your report, Frank, uh, you say John has done some trail maintenance on the Tkebok and Forshu River Trails. Who's John? One of our people?
John Darson. Is there facilities managed?
And, uh, Tkebok, is that the one, is that Arcadia?
That's, that, the, uh, name's changed in the last six or seven years. It used to be the Bok Trail.
Back of the Arcadia School?
Back of Arcadia.
Uh, future side of the Ark. Sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize.
And Trail.
According to the sign. Um, and I'm not, so, and the Forshu, is that the Chauvok Meadows? Where's that?
No, uh, Forshu Trail is, uh, a trail that encircles the Hebrew Recreation Complex.
Okay, yeah, all right. So. Okay, yeah, all right. So I had a concern expressed to me Monday night by a person associated with one of the trails organizations, a little different this one, but with the rails, the trail and all that, that they, um, that there's been some omissions in the promotional materials prepared by YASTA. Uh, at least they think there's been some, so I understand that that the only trails in Yarmouth County that have been identified is one at Publico Point to the windmills. And I wondered if you've had any correspondence with YASTA or contact from YASTA about listing those two trails that you've mentioned here, uh, in their promotional material, which I understand will eventually go to the Dreamers and so on guide. Any contact at all?
Uh, a few years ago, we participated with the Yarmouth ages.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like it's on, no.
Sam, there we go.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Few years ago, we participated in a project with, uh, um, YASTA, Argal Rec, Yarmouth Rec, and, uh, the Public Health. And we created a document of various trails in the region. And, uh, I think the document is called, uh, Where to Walk in the Tri Counties. And, um, it, there is a digital version of that copy on the YASTA website. We often share it for our purposes when we're doing trail, trail walks or hikes. All I can think of is that possibly maybe YASTA featured some of those trails specifically, and maybe it was misinterpreted, interpreted. But, um, I know that, um, there's, I think on that project that we worked on, there was probably 25 trails that were featured on that.
Within the region.
Within the region.
The YASTA region, I take it?
Yes. And, um, I, I think that's one of the documents that we, it, we have like a fold-out type of brochure, or we, or we use it digitally to, uh, to send to people when they're inquiring about places to walk or hike. So, uh, I know that's one project that we've worked on. Um, I can, I can chat with Neil McKenzie just to see.
Well, see what, uh, so, maybe give Chris Perry a call.
Okay.
Get Chris a call.
Yeah.
I had some, and I wonder if you could send me a copy, if you've got a copy of that thing, if you could send me a co, get a copy till you drop it off here and I'll get it in the box.
I think, um, we're getting some new, uh, English, uh, brochures printed, so I, I think the only ones we have left are in French, but we can, we can get you some, or I can send you.
No, we don't speak French.
The, 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 the digital link works good on your handheld, too.
You got it. No, seriously, when they come around, would you get one too? Thank you.
I'll look into that.
Thank you Cliff. Uh, go ahead Wade.
Do we not now, also, didn't, did you not, did Nova Scotia Rec just unveil a, a trail linked to all of the trails in Nova Scotia? So those would be on there, would they not?
They should be all linked within our region of the whole entire trail network. Sometimes unfortunately, some offshoot trails do get missed in that type of promotion, but I think with the Nova Scotia Trails launch, they were concentrating mainly on the abandoned rail trail, trail system.
Maybe that's part of what he's referencing.
Probably.
Um, I have another question, actually. I was wondering about the participation app. I know last year, of course, we had a participation contest which ran. Is there any more that's gonna be happening with that in 2020?
Yes, there is. Um, we're kind of, uh, staff member short right now, but we are, uh, interviewing currently for another active living coordinator, and that's gonna be one of their duties, is to get that, that type of hype going seasonally.
Do we have any, any kind of control with what we personally can do with it, or is it done on a national basis?
It, that app is done on a national basis, but I think we can use the app to do some more local type of things with, with some of our facilities that we have.
When you're ready to go, give me a call and we'll promote it.
Your name is right there, and probably your email and phone number as well.
Thanks Frank.
And Frank, uh, for the next meeting, can you put, I was, uh, had a meeting yesterday, or the day before, with the municipal cannabis and alcohol project, and, uh, they had a question about signage on our, some of our municipal or recreation facilities. So if you put that on there, I'll get the information. We'll talk about it the next, uh, next Yarmouth Rec meeting, okay?
And I think, I, I think the plan, i- if you're referring to the no smoking signs.
Yeah.
Being expanded to include cannabis, I think there's some things already in the works for that.
Yeah, and I think there's a template out there that's quite good, too, from what I understand. So, okay, anything else for Frank? Thanks Frank. Oh, Frank, Larry Walker, huh?
Larry Walker.
Yeah, I know, good. Uh, Economic Development Natalie Smith. Natalie, how you doing today? Good?
Can tell Frank was here. I'm doing fantastic, thank you.
Anything for Natalie, or Natalie, you got anything you'd like to point out for us, please?
Um, I'd like to make mention of something that staff has accomplished. Uh, it's section five of my report, and, um, so over the last three months, we've been doing some continuous improvement activities. And one of the things that we thought was really important is how do we communicate what we do to the public so that when they come up to the third floor to get a building permit, a development permit, or anything, how can we provide them with as much information in advance so that we can process their applications as smoothly as possible? So I would encourage you in the public to check out the link that's identified there. So if you go under, uh, departments, uh, planning and development, building permits, you'll now see a, a bunch of thumbnails, and the thumbnails, one represents a building development guidelines handbook. So it says what do we have to do, how to contact them, what is our process. We've also identified a building checklist, so here are all the things that you should consider when you're thinking about building a structure. And then we've also identified some samples. Uh, additionally, and I want to give a personal shout out to Judy Durkey, who took, uh, the initiative to actually do this whole project. So she's learned a lot of great things, and we've gotten the benefit of it. Um, so if you go, you'll go under our land use bylaw and also our municipal planning strategy, you'll see that we have actually broken it out into the sections. So rather than going through a 300-page document, you can go right to the sections. Uh, so more to come, but, uh, I want to thank them very much for, uh, their efforts so far, so.
Good. I think we're good Natalie, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, business, uh, e-voting Jeff?
So, um, this year is an election year, and as was the case the last couple of elections, I am assuming the council wishes to proceed with, uh, electronic balloting, but, uh, we haven't, I acknowledge we have not made that decision, but I'm advising you that Halifax, last election, Halifax Regional Municipality coordinated and conducted a tender to, on RFP to, um, secure uh, e-voting services for, for HRM. And all other municipalities in the province who wish to procure e-voting services are able to piggyback on their contract. So they've created it in such a way that, um, that the vendors, the successful vendor will have to also offer that service for any municipality that wishes to, to participate. So I'm letting you know that, that that process is underway. You're on, not under any obligation to, to either go with e-voting or to necessarily piggyback on their contract, although I, I would suggest if you are gonna go with e-voting, that is the, the most efficient way of, of selecting your, your provider. Just to let you know that process is underway, and, uh, in the future, we'll have a decision to make both around whether we're gonna use e-voting, and if so, uh, we'll have a recommendation from Halifax staff.
And I think Jim's gonna take my question, I know he is. Go ahead Jim.
Probably not. Do you need any, uh, direction from us at this stage, or will you?
Not at this stage, just pointed in your, in your, um, in your front of, front of mind, top of mind, that we'll be talking about the election in, in upcoming months, in so far as, uh, returning officer, um.
Has he expressed interest again?
I haven't ma, done anything on that front, but that's, that's to come over the next couple of months.
Okay, good. Jim, and you did take my question. You phrased it a little better than I would. Anything else? Are you good? Thank you very much. Um, anybody else? Good, thank you. Uh, it says transit. Advisory Committee. Yeah, do we have anything in here, Jeff?
Yes.
You didn't hear somewheres?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so we were asked to prepare our terms of reference for a, or a policy around a, uh, a transit advisory committee. And so took the bold assumption that you would want, uh, citizen involvement on that committee. And so rather than creating a completely separate policy, we have added it on as section 10 of your citizen advisory committees. And so if you proceed to, uh, section 10, it kind of lays out the, the role of the co, how the committee would be made up. Um, we have suggested here seven elected and/or volunteer members appointed by council in accordance with the citizen appointment process. Uh, that the manager of public works or his designate may attend any meeting of the committee and speak on any matter under consideration. That the committee will elect its own chair. Uh, chair will preside on all their meetings. And they will establish an annual meeting schedule and provide it to the CAO, who will then make it available to the public. And, uh, means will take place in accordance with the committee's means schedule and otherwise at the call of the chair. So fairly succinct, but, uh, pass, passing this policy will give you, uh, a, create the opportunity for the transit advisory committee.
We have a motion to bring this forward to council. Moves by Councilor Barry Dawn, second by Councilor Steve Barry. Question, please. Question is called. Go ahead Cliff.
I'm gonna vote to bring it before council, but I do have some concerns about it, and I'll express them when it comes before council.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Uh, request for decision transit ticketing system. Uh, Chad, you're not getting off the hook, I guess, huh? Or Natalie, okay. Okay.
Acting in a supporting role. So some background. So transit bus operations has had significant downtime with the current automated fare collection system purchased in 2015 when we launched the transit service. Uh, it has had a negative, uh, effect to the quality of transit service provided to ridership, and has reduced our staff's confidence on the reliability of the system. The bus has a 45-minute loop into one direction, as you know, and it has two minutes between each stop. That's 17 stops, right? And that's between each non-flagged bus stop. So when the automated fare syst, collection system is not working or intermittent, it impacts the service schedule up to six to eight minutes per stop. So that 45 minutes could now start to creep up to 60 minutes or greater. Resolution of the system software issues with the system provider has not been able to be achieved to our satisfaction. Uh, the service provider, um, technical person is in another, it's in Mexico and Toronto. And so we have some language challenges. We have some technical challenges. We don't have the technical capability here to do problem resolution. Uh, and so this is why we're coming to you today. Any questions so far on that, that Chad could speak to with regards to the current service before I launch into the new system?
Go ahead Wade.
Just wondering what the problem is. Is it breaking down literally? What, what's going on?
Well, quite simply, it's, uh, technology's great until it's not functioning anymore. So there's been software issues, hardware issues, and connectivity issues. The bus connects to a server every evening. So it's been a multitude of issues. Um, and like Natalie says, we, we do pay an annual, um, tech support fee, but we've had some issues with, with that, uh, service providers.
So how it works now is you have to bypass, right? Is that what you're talking about? And then, and the tickets from there, like?
Yeah, we had paper tickets and, and, and a, like a plastic card pass.
Right.
And you essentially scan, there's hardware in the bus, and you would scan the, the pass or the tickets.
So it just plain won't scan?
Occasionally, yeah. And that's where the six to eight minute delay comes in. I mean, that's a worst-case scenario, but we have experienced that.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. I just wanted.
Councilor Hood?
So how much, how much this thing cost us? Is it something we bought? Like, was it a?
Yeah. Our initial investment was $25,000. $25,000.
So that's down the drain?
I'm sorry?
Down the drain? The 25,000 is down the drain?
Yes.
Like, down the drain? So how did we buy it? Why did we buy it?
We did an evaluation of.
Who's the we?
Uh.
Tommy Arber?
Yes. With the planner. Uh, did an evaluation of, of software systems that was out in the marketplace, and, uh, went through an RFP process and looking at weighted criteria. Um, and it, at the time, it was determined that it was the best system. One of the challenges with the system is that the system was designed to use a card, an automated card, uh, which would allow the user to basically.
Program the card.
Right. But we, we launched with the tickets, which that was not the intention of the software. And, um, we just have not had that adoption from our community to use technology to purchase the cards. And you'll see it as we go further in the report. So the ticket system, uh, because the software wasn't designed, it chokes in the system. So when it reads one, there might sometimes be a 20, 30-second delay. And so when you get a whole bunch of those, the, the system basically chokes. And that's why at the end of each night, they have to clear the cache of all of those tickets so that the next day, when they're running, they don't get further issues. So the way we were using it was not the way the system was designed.
So did we put, oh, the way we were using it was not the way the system was designed, so.
Right, and so our.
So we can't go back after the vendor for, or have we done that, or what have we done?
Uh, we can't go back to the vendor because we did not buy, we did not invest in them making software changes to allow the system to be more efficient for tickets. And we have not had the adoption rate of the smart cards from our ridership. They're basically, I don't know Chad, if you can talk to what percentage is cash, but I think you're going close to.
Yeah, currently, uh, cash fares account for about 45% of all the transactions.
So if you've got 45% cash here, those aren't even gonna be on that system, I take it?
Right, and you'll see in the numbers further in the report.
Yes, just to be clear, the, what you're referring to as a ticket is a disposable, single-use paper, uh, card with a, a QR code on it?
Correct.
I got two things right here in my wallet.
Okay.
Calplex?
Right, and so, and so.
Click, come in, and I'm done.
And so we, our system has a smart card like that, and that's what our intention was in purchasing it. But what we have found in reality is that the community does not want to buy a week at a time, or a month at a time. They want to, they want to go.
Did we know that?
Yes.
Did we know that before we bought the system?
No.
We didn't have data that would tell us that people.
No, but we, we did have people growling from the minute this.
Yeah, there was, there was a.
To be fair.
There was immediate pushback.
There was immediate pushback.
And so we.
Go ahead Jeff.
No, I was just gonna say, we compromised, uh, in terms of being able to take cash to satisfy the, uh, the demands of the public. And, you know, we've learned, and, and, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but the technology, uh, our hopes were for greater uptake in the community. It's a system that, uh, that does work in, in other jurisdictions. If you look at the, at the system, it seems like it's designed for, for a large city. I mean, it, it can handle a very complex transit system, but we have a very simple transit system. And so the rethink on this is, look, we're having all kinds of difficulties. Uh, the data isn't, isn't giving us what we want. The system is frustrating our, our, our riders. What could we do simpler? And so Natalie has a simpler solution that, uh, that she's found in another nearby jurisdiction. And, uh, you know, sometimes going simpler is, is the better solution. So that's the recommendation, and I'll let Natalie explain.
So, I had the opportunity to meet with the planning department of Bridgewater. And Bridgewater actually launched their transit service about a year after we did. So, they actually came here to look at our best practices and guidelines, et cetera. And in turn, we go to them for lessons learned. And so, we have a similar demographics, similar socioeconomic kind of balance. So, we're very similar in, in the use of transit. So, they have adopted a manual ticketing system. And what that means is that basically, they generate paper tickets. So, it's at a printer. And the rider buys either a monthly pass or they buy a one-fair pass. And they have different levels. They have adults, senior, young adults, whatever. They have a lot more types of fares. And basically, they just go to the bus, they insert it into the cash holder, they also have a choice of exact cash, and it's done. So, there's no automated reading of the ticket. And there's no interaction other than hello, nice that you're on the bus, with the driver. So, the driver doesn't have that complexity of having to manage any software interruptions or intermittencies. So, there's no electronic validation. That is really the recommendation, is that we migrate back to a manual ticketing system. That basically, it's still sold at retailers. Monthly passes are still sold at town hall. We would eliminate some types of passes. So, today, we have with the, with the automated system that we have right now, we have an unlimited day, unlimited seven days, unlimited thirty days, unlimited three hundred and sixty-five days. We would, because we don't have the ability to do that unlimited, our recommendation to you is that we'd move to a one-fair ticket at a dollar fifty. And we would maintain a monthly pass, but it would be a calendar pass. So, today, when you are getting your monthly pass, it's just attached on to the last day. This is a monthly pass, a calendar pass, so you'd buy January, February, March, April. Same value, fifty dollars, unlimited. Finance hasn't changed that request. And they would be a different color. So, the driver visually, very quickly can know, oh, January's this color, it has the year, it has the date. Get on the bus, right? So, really, it's a very, very simple process. From time to time, depending on what the travel, the Transit Advisory Committee wishes, we would do onboard surveys to determine where people are, the activity per stop. But each day, transit operations would be capturing cash sales and the number of daily tickets. And because we sell the monthly tickets here, we already know how many are in the system. We just wouldn't know how many times they've used it per month.
Cliff, you got something else?
I do. It's a follow-up. It arises from this. So, the one-fifty fare, so is the bus driver going to have to have quarter changes to do that instead of?
No, they pre-purchase the tickets like they do today.
All right, if I walk in with two tunies, two loonies, I want to get on the bus and go for a ride, can I do it?
Yeah, you drop in a toony.
Drop in what?
You drop in two-dollar coin.
And what happens?
You get on the bus. So, we have the cash fare.
I'm out fifty cents.
The choices are, if you pre-purchase a ticket, a one-fair ticket.
Where do I buy that?
You buy it at existing retailers. So, we have them all around the town, and you can buy them at town hall.
So, so, so I can't get on the bus with a buck fifty, with a loony and two quarters? Or, yeah, I can't?
No, you cannot. The exact change, the cash fare is two dollars. As it is today.
If you go pre-buy, it's fifty.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Or a monthly pass is fifty bucks. But if you're jumping on, you just drop a toony in.
Right. So.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Did I answer your question? So, one of the, one of the things why we came with the one-fifty is the majority of day-pass riders use the bus to go to their destination and they get back on the bus to go back to their original. So, there's no change in that fare, but for a lot of people, they only use the bus one way because the bus doesn't go after seven, right? So, in a way, they're going to get a save of a dollar fifty, right? But the incentive is to migrate people more to the monthly pass if they're using the bus every day because they get that cost savings of about fifteen dollars a month buying the fifty-dollar monthly pass.
Go ahead, Dawn.
I just want to make a comment of one strike for old. Always new does not always work, so I'm glad that you're going to the system that does work. So, old still keeps working.
That means you're going to make the motion to accept the recommendation to council?
Hundred percent.
Jimmy, want to comment? Jim? Who seconded that? Wade? Jimmy, you got a comment?
This will make it less stressful for our drivers.
Yeah, absolutely.
And maybe after the right period of time, three months, Chad and/or Natalie, we could have an evaluation of the changeover once it's implemented and we're up and working. Just, I know I've ridden the bus several times and it's a nice ride, get to say hi to lots of people, but.
You can bring your car right on the bus and sit it next to you beside your car.
I just want to make one more note to, to those that are listening out in the public. With, with council's recommendation and adoption of this change, the existing tickets, your existing tickets and your cards will still be valid on the bus for the majority of the year. So, both will be happening at the same time. So, if they have them or the retailers have them, they're not out of pocket.
Good. We have question, please. Questions are called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Thank you. Town of Yarmouth Twinning Sisters Cities Policy and Procedures, Jeff? Natalie, okay, keep on going, Natalie.
This request for decision reflects the work that has been done with the CAO, our communications officer, our executive planning assistant, myself, and the mayor from time to time. So, in October of last year, council requested staff to, staff to proceed with the next steps to establish a sister-city agreement with, I can't say that name. Thank you. In consideration of a Twinning Sister City agreement being established with.
Say it again, Dave. Thank you.
A Twinning Sister Cities Policy and Procedure document has been developed to provide council and staff guidelines within which the Twinning Sister City or project relationships with other municipalities may be established and managed by the town. The mayor of that city.
Dave? Say it again? Good.
Has provided the town of Yarmouth a memorandum of collaboration, agreement of collaboration, and a community profile document for assessment as part of the next step towards establishing the relationship. A mayor signing ceremony of the memorandum of agreement of collaboration would be coordinated as the last step in the process. I wanted to point out, in our Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, we do talk to, in our mission and vision statement about such things that would create these types of relationships. The goal is to, oh, I'm sorry. Did I just miss something here? The desired outcome for, for such an initiative is to create a global network of social community and economic relationships that will enhance the quality of life of Yarmouth residents. To expand and enhance cultural diversity and awareness. To create international awareness of town assets and its people. To advance international understanding, goodwill, and peace for the future generations. I've attached a recommendation of the policy as well as a procedures document, which I don't see attached.
So, the one you attached, Natalie, you could use that for, if we, I think, Counselor Hood, back in the seventy, eighties, did we have a sister agreement with Yarmouth Maine and Yarmouth England at one time? I know my Uncle Bill, when he was mayor, I think he went to Yarmouth, England on an occasion or two?
We didn't have a sister cities agreement. There was just an informal arrangement where nine Yarmouths would put on a thing. And I know that I went to one in Cape Cod. And there were two from the old country, England. And there were, there's the one from Yarmouth. Now, it used to be another Yarmouth in Nova Scotia, actually, in Cumberland County. It's gone on. There were two or three, two from Maine, for sure. And I think three or four from Cape Cod. Three anyway. So, I think there were nine. I have a, I actually have a plaque from that thing. But I don't think we had sister, you know, formal agreements. But it had, so, the thing was hosted by different ones?
I know we had one when I was on council, Jim, in the mid-eighties, between eighty-five and eighty-eight, we hosted one of them.
Yeah.
I took the mayor of Yarmouth, England, we played a little golf and had a couple of drinks one day.
So, so, I think it just seems to have died out. I don't know whether, we never continued, whether it still goes on or not. But it wasn't that kind of agreement that we're talking about here.
Keep going, Natalie. Are we good?
I guess from, from, from an organizational point of view, there is, there is one step, if we were to adopt the policy and procedures, is to really, to review the, the, the criterias for establishing the relationship. We've gotten the community profile information. And basically, that would be the recommendation to sign the agreement. So, I've identified some follow-up actions here. And Mr. David and Jennifer Choune are here, if you have any questions on, on that relationship.
Cliff, are you got your, lately, is getting any other questions? You got your light on there?
Oh, it's still on. It's a long way to the way.
Yeah.
In a funny place of the world.
Go ahead, Jim.
A troubled place of the world.
So, what's the, based on your presentation, Natalie, and wanting to listen maybe to Jennifer and David, what is the next step from your, from your perspective?
The next step is really for council to adopt the policy, which identifies a procedure. And once the policy is adopted, then it's really for our staff just to complete that final assessment as per the procedure. And then, really, at that point, it's if council wishes to sign the agreement, it's for us then to coordinate for the, the actual signing of that specific sister-city agreement.
I can be excited about something like that, but what's the, is there an immediate benefit? Or is, and/or is there a long-term benefit to having a sister-city? I mean, we've had a very close relationship with their installation of the Sarah Corning statue, and I think that's wonderful. Is it, will this benefit, how will this benefit us in the long term or short, or short term? And/or our sister-city?
Yeah, I think in the short, I mean, I think a lot of, there are lots of benefits, but I think that there are lots of community stakeholders who are interested in this relationship. So, for example, our education board, our health, people in the health community, because again, she was a nurse. We have a university here. So, there are lots of community stakeholders who would wish to participate in understanding how we can, how they or we can forge the relationship. From a municipal point of view, this community is very sophisticated. So, they're, they're ten times larger than we are. And so, from a cultural point of view, they're very advanced. So, there could be some learnings about, you know, how do they administer culture and heritage? How do they maintain buildings? So, there might be some personal, not personal things, but some of the committees of, of the town that might be interested to understand how do they do things and then exchange knowledge.
So, we make, we make a motion to go the next step. And a year from now, how do we evaluate or assess that possible benefit? We have to get there first, I realize, but.
I think that is, that will be the next step, the role as we go through the information. Sorry, Lindsay, the procedure part wasn't attached to this document, so I, unless I've missed it. Maybe if the CAO could look at that, if he's got it there? Didn't see it? Yeah, there are some criterias that we established in the procedure. So, part of it is we would want to maybe quantify what would we want and expect in year one? Maybe it's just the signing ceremony and a couple of letters going backwards and forwards. What would we want to accomplish in year two? So, I think we have yet to actually, as council, identify what would be your expectations in year one and two and three, et cetera.
And that would be, and there would be a cost to that, too, and we don't know what that is at this point.
Part of this policy and procedure is that annually, council has to identify, as you do with other activities, what is the budget? And a budget should be based on some sort of work plan or expectation of activities. So, yes, it has, it must be budgeted.
I guess I'm, as a counselor, am prepared to go the next step, but I don't want to be committed to a point where we, of no return, that's all, because of the cost and, and the possible, or not knowing what the benefits could be. And I appreciate the fact that Jennifer and David are here. And so, I'm just a little bit uncertain. But I'll make, I'm going to make the motion that we proceed to the next step.
A second motion on the understanding, but I guess other questions.
Go ahead. Is this a United Nations or, I see it evolved after the Second World War and the concept was to try and bridge some gaps between the countries that were more affected directly by war and all the rest? No, I mean, Armenia was First World War time period. But, so, so, is there any, some kind of a sponsoring body for these things, for these?
There actually is a sister, there is a worldwide organization for sister cities that you can register. You know, that you've got this agreement. It's really, it's really, essentially, it's goodwill. It's goodwill between different communities. And, and it's up to each community in the agreement to determine what they want out of it. And that could be from an economic point of view, a social point of view. So, it's, it's not mandated that it needs to be this value or it could have no effort other than if you're visiting our city, we'd be more than welcome to have you come in and do a handshake, have a cup of coffee. Or it could be as extravagant as your imagination.
See, I'm seeing two, two things here. I'm seeing sort of, I'm seeing goals that are more into helping each other out and bridging gaps in a world that's getting fragmented and all this and that. And you're talking about economic things. It'll benefit us economically. Is that, am I wrong on that? But I think there's a conflict between those two concepts. We shouldn't be doing this for, oh, God, I can't, Pollyanna reasons, you know what I mean? But I, that's a bad word, but, you know, for, it's a bigger picture than just economic things, which you list about five economic benefits for doing it. I'm not sold on it for economic reasons. If I'm going to be sold on this, it's for. building bridges between our culture and the culture of another country and another place. Okay? If you like it. But I'm second, seconding the motion because I think it's worthy of consideration, so.
So, we good? Cliff, you good? Dave, you want to have an opportunity to say a word or two? You can come on up right here to my
On the issue of economic activity, the, well, first of all, I think, maybe I could just begin by, by saying that this, this is another example of, I think, the, the wonderful relationship that has been established between Yarmouth and Armenia that really we all saw and experienced at the unveiling ceremony back in mid-September, followed by the commemorative dinner that evening. And the process began, as Natalie will know, back last August, when the newly appointed ambassador of the, of the republic, the town, the town provided a very comprehensive package of information, which the ambassador took to Armenia and with her contacts in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and the municipality of Echmeadsen, really drove home the point that there was an opportunity here to, to enhance the already strong relationship that had been forged between Armenia and, and Sarah Corning and her life of service that I think council was aware of. And Echmeadsen is, is not just another city. It's, 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 as I think was noted, it's substantially larger than Yarmouth. It is a sophisticated city. It's an honor for Echmeadsen to have extended this proposal to Yarmouth because of its, its history. It's not just another city. It's the most important cultural and historic city in Armenia by far. And the, the, just to the question of economic development, the, the agreement that has been drafted, that eventually will have to be reviewed and approved, calls for collaboration in culture, education, science, technology, social security, local government, ecology, urban economy, sport and tourism. So, it's very, very broad. And in fact, I think Natalie touched on this a moment ago as well. One of the other articles in the memorandum or the agreement is to exchange best practices in terms of successful projects between the populations and of each, of each municipality or town, their municipality and the town of Yarmouth. So, it's very broad ranging. There's a, there's a lot in this. And following a signing ceremony, then I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, the agreement calls for regular exchanges of letters that would be exchanged every year to determine those areas where Yarmouth and Echmeadsen could collaborate. So, and there is a, you know, it's, 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 I thought the, the agreement as drafted seems to be pretty solid. To the, to the point, you know, it's, it's not an open-ended, one of the agreement, one of the articles allows either party to terminate with six months' notice if, if necessary, if by mutual agreement. But we think there's an opportunity here. We've already been very successful, I think, or the town is really on the map internet, with the Armenian community worldwide, including the, the diaspora. I, you know, when the unveiling ceremony took place, that was, that news was broadcast around the world through their various news outlets. And so, Yarmouth, there's an opportunity here for, to further build on the already cordial relationship that's been developed.
Jennifer, you got something?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that, that it's an economic development opportunity in the sense that Echmeadsen, it's relationship. It's all about relationship. Echmeadsen is like a door to the Armenian country and the diaspora. There are three million people in Armenia, but there are nine million people in the diaspora. Most of them are located in New England and in California. This is a tremendous opportunity. Even Natalie referenced this as a potential place of pilgrimage. Armenians are very loyal and dedicated to places of memory around the world. And the director at the Sarah Corning Center for Genocide Education in Toronto said that Yarmouth will now become one of those special places because of the relationship that Sarah Corning has forged. And they revere her as a saint. So, the potential for an economic development opportunity definitely comes from the United States especially. You will see a lot of visitors on your ferry. And, and there are other opportunities here. We have talked about the development of a play that would tell Sarah Corning's story in the same way that some, that Charlottetown has had Anne of Green Gables. These are just all ideas that can formulate, develop. We see this also as a wonderful student exchange opportunity. The educational component connected with this is huge. David Buckland at the center here has become very excited about the idea of student exchange. So, again, the, the, and, and again, relationships. If you bring Armenians here because of all of these reasons, who knows where that will lead? When people develop friendships, economic opportunities often follow. So, these are just the instinctive things that we've seen just in our relationship with the Toronto, Montreal and Armenian communities that we have been in touch with over the, the last ten years, actually. It shows a lot of promise and we just feel that we'd like to leave this with you for consideration. We think it's very valid and very, very meaningful. And we're very proud of our hometown girl. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you Jennifer. Jim, you going to call for a question? Questions have been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On the contrary, thank you very much Jennifer and Dave. Glebe Street Sewer Separation, request for proposal, request for proposals results. Mark, you going to take care of that, sir? Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
There was a low tender and they did the project, previous project.
Yes, and it's probably less than we expected in price.
They know what they're doing. They proved it. I like the recommendation.
Really personally disappointed that you didn't rock him, rake him over the coals for something.
We still got time. We still got time.
Questions have been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Mark. Appointment of Mariners Center Steering Committee. Jeff, is that you?
Yep.
Go ahead, sir.
See worship, you'll remember that we, we approved a vision statement here at a recent meeting and our partner municipalities have as well. After the vision now has, has been cast, the next bit of work, and it's, it's largely work that I think ought to be done by Mariners Center or led by Mariners Center, is building out the strategic plan to support the vision. So, there's a vision for what the center should be in the future. So, how do we get there? And the suggestion is that the three municipal units each appoint a couple of people to sit on a, a steering committee with representatives of the board of Mariners Center to undertake the next steps in the, in the work to, to build that strategic plan that would then be presented back to the, back to the owners. And so, looking for two, two representatives of council to take up the seats on the steering committee.
Wait first, Jim next.
I'll do that. I'd really like to be part of it.
Two. Yep.
You interested Jim? Steve's interested. Councillor Berry's interested, Steve. Jim, will you make the motion to accept councillor Cleveland? Cliff, have you got Cleveland and Berry?
I will, I will, but there's, you asked, two people have responded. Should you ask if there's anybody else that's interested besides myself?
Cliff, you interested?
And then I'll call for a question on the motion.
I want, I want to make a comment that says there's nobody out there raising any money. There was no steering committee for Mariners Center until Skate Yarmouth came up with six hundred odd thousand dollars. Got the community organized, mobilized, pulled us into meetings and we decided to go ahead. You can do all the planning that you want. Nothing's going to happen until you get that component organized and started, I think. Now, if the steering committee's job is to do that, number one, then I see it. But that, the steering committee in the last, when Mariners Center was built, came about after the community was mobilized and the three councils agreed to go ahead. And it was spurred on by the activity of Skate Yarmouth, who raised over six hundred thousand dollars at that point in time.
So, your worship just, I may not have presented this clearly. This steering committee is about setting the vision, strategic plan, not about the capital project. That's, that's a separate item. So, the, the vision that was cast was for the center, whether there's an expansion or not. It's about what it means to the community, how the community values it. And so, how do we build a business plan or strategic plan that, that positions the center as it is or as it may be in the future, potentially expand? This is not the capital project.
So, we haven't had a big push from the community to do this, have we?
The capital project?
Well, no, but the Mariners Center Expansion Project, call it that, has been generated by Mariners Center. That's, that was the genesis of it. I'm not aware of any, any strong community-based group. There are, obviously people want to see it happen, but there's no Skate Yarmouth out there pushing the way that happened. So, I mean, so we end up carrying the ball and we find out that probably the feds and the province want to see some community involvement in the terms of the fundraising part. Like about 10% probably. And, I mean, there were numbers out there previously, when some of the wish lists came in of, you know, like forty million dollars. And you know what? You don't hear good comments about forty million dollars in our community. And I doubt, anyway, we, but we've been through a, a process to sort of outline what the vision was. What was that all about?
So, so that was step one. That was step one. That was casting the vision. That's what the owners want it to be. And so, the question is, how will the board take and deliver on that? What is their plan to deliver on that? And so, the committee to oversee that work should involve the owners so we don't get a disconnect. And that's the, that's the thinking is let's get a couple of councillors from each and board representatives to lead that process.
Go ahead Jim.
Jeff and, and my fellow councillors, one of the questions I have is that we have representation on the Mariners Board of Directors. And that person right now is Wade? Is that right? And, and, and so we have, now we're forming a, I just want to understand Jeff. Now, we're asking, you're asking us to consider appointing a steering committee, which includes two councillors from each of our three municipalities?
Right. And representatives of the board. Citizen representatives of the board.
Okay. And, and from there, the, are we duplicating, do you see us, that committee, the new committee you're suggesting, duplicating some of the activity of the Mariners Board? Or, or are they somehow overseeing the activity of the steering committee? I'm just trying
Yeah. This, this is a, this is a project.
Okay.
This is a project. And I think it's perfectly appropriate, very appropriate, to have your council representative on that board as one of your appointees to this committee.
So, it's like an ad hoc committee possibly?
Yeah, it's a project committee.
Okay. All right. I understand better. Jeff, thank you very much.
So, let's rehash, because it may be useful to do it. Jeff, you'll have to correct me where I'm wrong. After the public meetings that were called and sponsored by Skate Yarmouth, a steering committee was formed. And I'm going to try to remember as best I can. And the steering committee consisted on two representatives from each council. It had provincial representation in the form of Debbie, Deborah, Smith. It had federal representation. Bob Manuel was there, I think, from a, whatever.
HR DC.
Yeah. HR DC. Recreation directors were on. There were more. Skate Yarmouth had two reps on there. I believe the Berea Commission may have been on this. Skate Yarmouth had both Freeman and Gil. And there may have been some other ad hoc. I don't, the CAOs or whatever.
Probably from economic.
Yes, it was economic. So, it was a fairly large committee, but what I'm emphasizing is, you had a lot of government people on there and you're looking for government money. And why they were on there was because they were the communication pieces back to government and kept us informed and sort of gave us guidance on how much probably there was available, all the rest, right? And I guess that's something, for quite some time now, I thought maybe, where is that? Why is that, aren't we going to need those pieces going forward? There, that's what I'm trying to get at. And, and is this just really going to spin the tires a bit more?
And we had the example today councillor Hood in a small way, a smaller project with Linda from the Splash Park, right? Go ahead Jeff.
So, I'll, the, the expansion project is independent. If you think of this as, let's, let's drop the, the steering committee and just refer to it as the ad hoc committee on, on vision and strategy, as opposed to a steering committee on, on build the expansion. Two different things.
Tell me the Mariners Center is already built and this is an add-on and we wouldn't have to down all of that conceptual stuff we did the last time, or is that what you're saying?
In a sense. So, so when Mariners Center was built, as I recall, and you may, you may have more, more memory and certainly would have had more involvement at the time, the, you know, Mariners Center was sold as, as a multipurpose facility and we talked about all the needs that it would fulfill in the community. But as far as mandate goes, I don't know that there was anything articulated on paper more than break even. Just don't lose money. And that
That wasn't break even. That was a mandate.
Yeah. So, but it wasn't really fleshed out. And what this is about, this exercise is about, okay, we know Mariners Center means a lot more than the community. And you folks as owners with, with your, with our partners articulated that very well. And Max Chauvin gave that back to us at a recent meeting. And, and it was a bit visionary because in some ways it was, it was saying more than what it is today. And, and the challenge to the board is to deliver on that more. And so, this exercise is to help them figure out the pathway to get us where we want to be in, in fifteen years. In terms of service delivery, whether that service is in, is in ICE facilities, multipurpose rooms, or field houses and aquatic facilities. No matter what is there, how are we going to make this the place that everyone in Yarmouth County identifies with for one part of their life or another? Even if that part of their life is just to go and sit and have a coffee and, and see kids recreate, if that's all it is, or to watch a hockey game or attend a trade show.
Jim?
About this, the Splash Park presentation, does this have an impact on what we're, what we're forming, attempting to form now, do you think? I wonder. Just, just, I'm not looking for a yes or a no. I'm just, I'm curious because
Yeah, I don't, it's not about a capital project.
It'll end up a piece of that.
It'll end up a piece of that, I would watch, or a group, but it has nothing to do with it. It raises money separately. It's a completely separate animal.
We're renting space or buying space from the Mariner Center, though. Anyway, I don't want to prolong the discussion. I'm quite happy with the discussion so far. Sorry, thank you for putting up with me, everybody.
Just to be fair, I'm concerned that we're going to spin our wheels and this project's not going to go ahead at the pace the public probably expects it would. I can tell them this, we're five to 10 years away from that thing, minimum.
I think if everything fell into place, it'd be eight, I think, but...
So, on the spinning the wheels or on the capital project side, we do have a committee involves the mayor and the deputy mayor. And, you know, there was a proposal developed that was submitted to government, but there's work that needs to be done. And the word back from government is, start your fundraising. And so, that group does need to meet and does need to activate that. And we have an item later on the agenda in camera that may be related to that.
It's a crazy idea, but it'd be a great project for the hospital population to pay out of the dollar, and it's going to be a huge one in this project.
Yep. Questions to be called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Remo appointees.
Okay, so we've all approved the Remo Agreement. That is the Regional EMO Agreement. So, now Argyle, the District of Yarmouth, and Town of Yarmouth are all together on EMO. And so, we need to form an executive committee. And the agreement provides that each municipality can appoint two representatives, one being the mayor or warden, and one other counselor to sit on the executive committee. So, we would need a motion to appoint one of the six here at the table today, along with...
Don, we sit on that now. So, I'll make, maybe if we have somebody make a motion, if anybody else want to do it? The mayor and Counselor Barry? Don sits on it now. He's been part of the formation of the new agreement with... Is that good? Do you accept on it? Yeah? Go ahead, Jim. Make a motion.
Well, I'm going to make that motion, but I wanted to ask Greg Barrow. Sometimes I have difficulty understanding agreements, and I can read them about 500 times, and are we okay with that agreement? I know we've already approved it, but, you know...
Yeah, I already have.
Yeah. And so, similarly, the other two units have their own lawyer to support the agreement and make sure it's right. We've dotted all the i's and crossed the t's.
Questions? Questions to be called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you. For Action, 12 months notice, oh, 8H, yeah, Vancouver Street. Counselor McLeod had a question about, I think, the asset donation program and the Vancouver Street project with the...
Yesterday, I attended the Doctor Recruitment and Retention Committee and sit as an observer, mostly, but I'm allowed to contribute. And ever since the project started, I was trying to find a way that I could make a donation to that project on Vancouver Street. And no answers, not able to. I'm not in business anymore to make contributions with help. So, I spent half an hour, a few minutes this morning with Jerry Varon. And so, he's going to help me explore how I can make a donation, a charitable, get an income tax receipt, a charitable donation. And Jerry, one of the things I didn't mention this morning was, as perhaps you know, I've used Canada Helps in the past. And just sort of include that in your search. And I know you're going to, so he's simply going to help me find a way that I, so I can get an income tax receipt. Thank you very much, Jeff. And so, I'm just, I know that the operation of the building is going to be, you know, apparently, we're not going to charge the occupiers of the building very much rent, so that we're going to be, I think, continually fundraising. And I think it's important that the community have the ability to hopefully find a way to get an charitable income tax receipt. So, that's all I wanted to say. And Jerry's already started. As I say, we had a discussion this morning, and it'll take a little while. So, thank you very much, fellow counselors.
Good. Thank you. For Action, 12-month notice, MGA and Police Act.
Thank you, Jeff.
There's no action required. It's just...
Good. Thank you. Yaster Re 55+ Games Funding, maybe Counselor Cleveland on that one.
Yeah, I'll tackle that one. Yaster submitted a bid last year to host the 55+ Games. We were successful in our bid. We've been awarded the games for 2021. So, now comes the time where we're making a request for funding. Now, the games are being planned in September of 2021. It's the 16th through the 18th. They take place in locations and facilities throughout all three municipalities, and the ask is equal for everyone. So, in the past, we hosted the 55+ a few years back. It's been a while now. But at any rate, they've reported over 700 participants. They're very enthusiastic with the idea that this is going to generate a lot of economic benefit, participation numbers, significant room night impact, local spending, using the recreational infrastructure, of course. And so, what they're looking for, and the budget is attached online, what they're looking for locally from the municipal governments in total is $4,000 per donation for a total of 16. And that's, if you look at three, Town of Yarmouth, Municipality of Yarmouth, and the Municipality of Argyle, the fourth would be M Plaque. So, they're looking for the equal from that. And so, the request is for $4,000. I'd like to make that motion, that we commit to funding the 55+ Games to the tune of about $4,000. And the funds, because it's in September 2021, they'd only be required by April 1st of 2021. So, it's not something that'll even affect us through this budgeting period.
Like hearing that, don't you, Jeff? Counselor Barry seconded that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions to be called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you have a question, Jim, or you got your light on? It's been on all day, so you might as well keep it on. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Yaster Re... Go ahead, Clint. Go ahead, men.
Of course, they couldn't get through that.
Go ahead.
So, the Marketing and Promotions Levy Advisory Committee, is that the committee that levies the tax on hotels in the Towne of Yarmouth?
Yes.
So, we're paying double?
No, we're not.
Our taxpayers are paying double.
How do you figure that?
That $4,000 comes out of the businesses in the Towne of Yarmouth. We're paying another $4,000, and the other two municipal units are each paying $4,000.
Last I checked, the room levy comes from, they're being charged that, right?
They're not being charged in the municipality, are they?
They're being charged if they will be.
There are taxpayers, are commercial taxpayers that are paying that, are paying. Towns paying twice as much as the other two.
No. I disagree completely.
Okay, you agree. That doesn't mean I agree.
I don't care. Be honest.
This is your baby. Pick me up.
I lost complete control, Mark. You guys, can we get him onto the side, onto that side?
What'd you miss?
Jeff's going to have a comment on that.
I'm making allegations unproven, of course, but when the fourth partner in this for $4,000 is the Marketing and Promotions Levy Advisory Committee, that committee is funded by the taxpayers of the Towne of Yarmouth. Therefore, the taxpayers of the Towne of Yarmouth put in $4,000, $4,000. What are you saying? The people that pay the tax?
Cliff, the people, the room levy money comes from people who are getting...
Those rooms.
It's a tax.
Do you, do you stay at the hotel? Are you living at the Grand Hotel?
That money can be spent in Yarmouth, not on a joint thing like this.
That's what M Plaque's money's for. It's for promotion.
In the county?
How do you figure it's in the county?
Because it's coming from town businesses, only.
No. It's not.
It will be, because M Plaque will soon have a hotel in the municipality. It's a size limit, right?
So, the municipality's already approved the tax? It's necessary to be approved to do that in the municipality?
Yep, it has.
Whoa, okay. Well, it hasn't happened yet.
Anybody get some rum?
I think we already passed that, didn't we? Yes. We already voted on it.
No, we haven't voted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Yaster, this is...
Oh, dear God, it's me again.
Rest every T Mac request. Wade, is that you again?
Yeah, it's me again. All right. So, here, we're trying to get, and this is a bid that we're putting together for the 2021 T Mac, which is Travel Media Association of Canada. They're having their annual conference in AGM. The bid is due the end of February of this year. All right? Now, what this is, is a group of media writers, travel media writers, who gather together. It's a big showcase for the destination. It would be hugely beneficial in our attempts to grow. As a matter of fact, this was hosted, I can't say for sure, because I don't think I, there it is, held in Cape Breton in 2016. It was really helpful for Cape Breton tourism. So, this is just us putting in a bid for this. But what we're looking for is, A, this is the easy part, a letter confirming the town's support for the bid, obviously. The second thing is, if we got it, we would look for support to the amount of $10,000 for the T Mac Conference and AGM. And they would be required in the fiscal year of 2021, 2022. So, that's the request. So, we're formally asking for that. I can make a motion. You can vote for or against, as you wish.
I'll second the motion, but I have a question, Wade and Jeff. In the budget line, the page below your presentation, it talks about the municipal partners indicating, supporting it to the tune of $110,000. And you're, and then there's, how many $10,000 donations are you going to get based on your number two above the, Yaster formally requests the following, and number two indicates confirmation of funding support in the amount of 10 grand? Where is the other, I would assume, just three units or four units? I wonder how you got that 110,000?
It's a good question that I can't answer. I don't know.
That's fair. I just was wondering, I noticed that in my read over for today's...
Municipal Partners, 110,000.
Yeah. Yeah, but I wonder how many municipal partners there are. That was my question. I was wondering if...
Well, we're not committing to 10. It's a lot more than that, by the look of it.
Well, that's what I...
Well, all we're asking for is 10 at this point.
Yeah, but you're going to be asking for 110.
I can't say that. I can't answer that question.
Well, what's this meaning?
I can't, I don't know.
Maybe can we get...
Maybe we can refer it till I can answer that question. I'm not trying to hide anything from you. I just can't answer the question.
Jim, did you second that?
I seconded it.
How about if we...
I've got a $268,000 budget here.
Yeah. I think at one time, Jeff, 2009, 2010, 2011, I think we were actually members of the Travel Media Association of Canada, and the only town in Canada to be a member. I went to a conference in Fredericton, and we got some publicity out of that. We had one of the internationally known golf writers came here. We had other travel blog writer came. We had somebody from the Globe and Mail. We had somebody from the Washington Post did a review of, it was beginning to look a lot like Christmas with the Grand Hotel story in the park. I thought at that time, we had five...
Can I answer the question? I have the answer to the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Neil just sent me a text. The municipal partners are most of the municipalities from Digby to Shelburne, and that's why they only need $10,000 from the Towne of Yarmouth. So, it's a large ask through a bunch of municipal partners, okay?
So, it'll be like 10...
So, it goes outside of Yaster?
10 units.
Yes. Municipalities from Digby through Shelburne, and that is outside of Yaster, yes.
But you've got Yaster putting in 70,000, and we'd be contributing to that 70,000 through our fees or levies to Yaster, right?
Yes. And that's true.
In addition to...
Yep.
But Wade, that would be like 10 units at 10 grand, or 11 units at 10 grand each. Anyway, thank you very much. I just noticed that, and I was curious as to how you arrived with that.
Question? You have another question, Jim, or you have called a question?
No, I don't have, if everyone's finished with discussion, I'll call for a question on the motion.
Okay. Question, questions to be called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Oh, that cuts off everybody, right? Yeah. Municipality of Barrington Re Development Credit. Jeff, is that you?
Sorry. Do you want to speak for that question?
I do. Your worship, this is an item...
That I picked up in our previous meeting materials, and I frankly wanted to bring it forward earlier and didn't get a chance to do it. I forgot. But this is a letter from Municipality of Barrington on December the 11th to all municipal units in Nova Scotia, so we're one of 50. Municipality of Barrington has made an application to the Department of Education at Early Childhood Development to be able to provide a personal development credit to students who join a volunteer fire department and complete the required training. And Don and Steve, maybe this may touch on some things that you have more knowledge about than I do. Joining a volunteer fire department helps students with interpersonal and communication skills as well as problem solving while serving their community. Along with personal development of students, this program also has the potential to increase fire department memberships. It's a key one. The age of firefighters is increasing, and departments are finding it difficult to attract younger members. It is key to attract people into the fire department while they are young so that they can form a lifelong connection with the service. The Barrington Municipal Council would like to request your support, the towns, for this application in the form of a letter or otherwise to allow schools in Nova Scotia to offer a personal development credit for students that join a fire department and undergo the required training. I thought this would be, I thought this was a pretty worthwhile effort without knowing a whole lot about it. Don, do the students have a course credit for personal development? Do you know anything about that?
Nothing, no. But I've investigated the faculty.
But anyway, I think it'd be useful, look, perhaps we should talk to the fire department first, but I think we should support this request.
They have like a co-op program where they go to different, to the hospital, to work sites, and all kinds of different places, but they really don't have that...
It's not a credit as such.
...program itself.
But it's resume building.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Barrington Council, I thought, had a pretty good initiative going here, and they're looking for our support for the application.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion that we support that, but that we take it a step further, talk to the fire department, see if maybe we'd put some more beef into this. That's my motion.
Good. Excellent motion. Thank you. Question? Questions to be called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Previously Distributed Communities in Bloombury. Thank you, Wade. Do you want to comment on that at all?
No, not really.
We'll do it anyway. The best way is lost out...
Here, you can hold it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just do that. I'd just like to say that they were very appreciative and that that was one successful event. And I think that the actual Communities in Bloom, although they granted us the right to actually host the thing, had their doubts from the moment that we put our application in back in the day. I was told this personally, actually, by Raymond Cartier. And the thing is, is that we really, we really set the bar high, and so, we should be very proud of ourselves.
Good. Thank you.
You're in here.
Yeah, very good. Nice job, everybody. Jeff, Municipality of District of Yarmouth 3, Nova Scotia Transportation Infrastructure Renewal Request. Renewal Request.
Your worship, there's a letter in your package from Warden Anthony, and they're requesting council support, seeking the town's support to NSTIR, to Transportation Infrastructure Renewal, Nova Scotia, for a traffic study to investigate the feasibility or the, I guess the justification for a, an interchange at the Greenville Road.
At the Greenville Road?
Yes, Greenville Road and 101.
I thought it was called the Scott Road.
Well, they're calling it...
I think we're close, is it, oh, the Greenville Road, so the, okay. So they'd come down and off the Scott Road to get into the industrial park? The Greenville Road, Scott Road, is the Scott Road?
They do currently, what they're looking for is an interchange so that you could take an off-ramp off the 101.
But isn't one of the plans from the Department of Highways in the next 10 or 15 years to do a interchange, which would be probably less than one or two miles from that same location? And I know the interchange in Salmon River was in excess of $22 million at the time, and that's been up for 10 or 15 years. And this is one of those questions, councillor Cloud, that would, if we had one amalgamated or conciliated, consolidated, three units, that this would be something for that, but at this time, what does this request? I know we don't have any...
They don't have any access to the traffic study.
Yeah. Give them the traffic study?
We support that. It's up, they're leaving it up to the department.
Okay. Well, I'm good with that. Good with that, Jim?
I'll support it. There will be peace in the...
Yeah. And that's something, this is how it's changed, Cliffy's a peacemaker now. Boy, oh, boy, what's this world, this is like that sign, this is bizarro world.
I'll make a motion that we send a letter supporting and request to the municipality for traffic stuff.
Okay, good. Question? Questions be called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Municipal Affairs Re-A affordable Housing. Go ahead, Jeff.
Your worship, that's just for the record, we did receive an acknowledgement from the minister concerning our requests and proposals to the province regarding the high school as a housing development, and so I just want you to be aware of that, and have, have it on the record.
Good. Go ahead, Jim.
Why is it taking so long? Why is it taking so long? It's so frustrating, because, because Jerry, Jerry has to budget for the cost of the operation of the high school, the old high school that stands every year, and last year we budgeted only for, until the end of August. And I thought that this was going to be well in hand this year, and that we would know before.
I didn't catch that.
Thank you for the...
There's lots of times that would have helped you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you for the smile, everybody, but, but I just find it frustrating, because it costs us hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we're into another fiscal year in which I think we have to budget for those, for the, almost for the full amount, Jerry. And it's so frustrating, and I, you know, it's, what's, and I thought, I thought they were going to, since we were contributing a whole hell of a lot of money to help them make their project go, go forward, why is it taking so long? I know they have to meet the qualifications of the government of the affordable housing project, but gee whiz.
Yeah, and it would have been...
It's just, it's just, for me, it's just frustrating, because it's, it's money that we could use elsewhere.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so we, things are moving now, Jim, councillor, sorry, councillor, things are moving. For a long time, things were not moving. And so because of the, the initiative of the town to engage on the project, to suggest partnership with the province, and to, you know, the work of the Economic Development Officer with the developer, with the province, things are moving. But it would be unlikely that we would have this completed before late summer. And that's been the timeline that, since things started moving, they said, they kind of laid that out to us. So as long as the developer and the province and CMHC continue to do their work on the schedule that they indicated, that's where my sights are set. I would love for it to be end of next month, but that's, that's not realistic. So we were, we were in a holding pattern for a long time, and that, you know, we have some pent-up frustration, but I can assure you that things, and Natalie could speak more, or maybe perhaps in support, but I believe things are moving at the pace expected, and we're getting great cooperation and communication.
I feel for Jerry and his staff when we have to budget, I think, almost unnecessarily sometimes, but that's my frustration.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Your worship, the letter from the minister is actually, I think, a sign that there is progress on the file. That's an unusual, it's an unusual, I think, at this stage to get such a letter, and I think the town should have the mayor formulate a reply thanking for the advice, and otherwise place the letter on file. But I think there should be a, a, a letter expressing the gratitude of the town for the consideration his department is giving to this important project.
I think that, yeah. Yeah. Question? Questions be called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion to go on camera. There's nothing else, right, Jeff?